I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's great. Father, we love you so much and thank you for another opportunity to come together and discuss business for the school district. God, I just thank you that we have this opportunity and we have the freedoms that we enjoy in this country if we can do things like this. And God, I just pray that tonight we would make decisions that honor you and are best for the district. And God, that we would lay our opinions aside and just make decisions that are best for the kids. And God, I just pray for all the administration and the teachers as they're a month into the school year here now. And I just pray that you would give them strength each day to do their task with. And God, I just pray that you would help this to be the greatest year in the history of Huntsville schools. And I pray that you once again bless this meeting tonight in Jesus' name.
Good afternoon. We're called the September 11th, 2023 Huntsville Board of Education meeting board. We do have a forum. Welcome guests and employees. Mr. Warren, please.
Okay. We'll start off with our consent agenda. We have as the consent agenda, the through amendments from the, or excuse me, the meeting agenda from tonight. Through amendments from August meeting. We have our district financial report and authorization for electronic transfers. Unless there are questions.
Can I get a motion to the next and by Natalie, all in favor?
Second, or yeah, next on the agenda, we have three is our schedule reports. We started something this past year. We have faculty and staff recognitions. And we wanted to bring in, we randomly selected three people who had been submitted, or names have been submitted for recognition from the general public. This is through an online program that we started, I think in August, if I remember right. And we had these names drawn, Brittany Shaper, Ashley Davidson, and Denise Coger. And I know the two of them are here. They'll come on up. We're gonna embarrass them for a little bit. I'm just gonna read out what was actually said about them. For Denise Coger, it's, she really helped my child improve on her reading. For Ms. Davidson, it was, oh, Ms. Ashley, there are no words to express the immense appreciation I have for her. She is so helpful, supportive, and dedicated and kind to the kids and to the parents at WPS. She has helped my, she has helped my little through some tough transitions and with regulating and figuring out emotions. She is a great counselor. As parent, it's so reassuring knowing that she is there to help our littles through tough situations that are too big for them to carry alone. She brings sunshine and smiles to the entire WPS campus. Thank you, Ms. Ashley, for all you do. And for Ms. Shaper, we have, my child is in second grade now, but always takes the time to go and visit his previous kindergarten teacher, Ms. Shaper, anytime he possibly can get. The impact she has made, not only on my child, but all the children she has taught for 30-plus years is astonishing. She deserves more recognition than most. Her loyalty, compassion, and patience with all of the littles is enormous in this school district. So. From CS Bank, community sponsored, they gave us gift baskets for all three people, but two of them were able to attend tonight. So we thank you so much for your dedication to our coalition.
Thank you.
So kind of say Meredith Miller helped set up the gifts for that and Chamber of Commerce. And so she's put messages out to them and they've been very supportive in helping us recognize our teachers. So I'd like to just give a thank you to the whole Chamber and Cornerstone Bank, especially for tonight. And we will do this each month. We'll have just random drawings from people who've been submitted. So if you're out there, please continue to submit to recognize our folks. They do a lot of hard work. They're dedicated staff and they deserve all the recognition they can get.
And Bailey has put a link on the website now too, so you can go there as well as we'll continue to send out messages reminding people to do that.
Okay. Next, and I told them we could do it quick, so if they want to stay, they can. If they don't, they can go on.
Kindergarten tired.
Ain't no time like.
That's right.
Thank you.
Next, we have our student academic report. Mr. Ferguson piles this and let him go ahead and take off what we.
Okay, so I was pretty heavy with the testing scores and all that last month, so not so heavy this month. But I did include in there, I'm looking at this sheet, our testing schedule for the year. Ms. Anna Chapel takes care of putting this together and does a fantastic job with the help of the principals and all of our admin staff. But I just want to point out a few things. When you see ATLAS on there, that is our summative test for this year. That's the, you'll see it several times and I'll kind of explain that, but that is gonna be our summative test platform. And so when you see pilot on there, that's actually a writing pilot. We were asked to participate in a pilot program. Basically, it's gonna be setting the bar for the writing portion of the test. And so they'll take our scores and scores of other schools that opted in to participate in this. And they'll, they'll set the ranges for the scores on the writing test. So we are participating in that. And then PSAT, you see that on there. This is our 10th graders. The state pays for the 10th graders to take this test. It's basically a pre-SAT test and it's also known as National Merit or National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. And so the kids can take this test and if they score high enough, they can take it again in their junior year. And if they score high enough then, then they've got the opportunity to earn a scholarship, a National Merit Scholarship. So we, like I said, the state pays for it, so we might as well take it and give our kids a chance at that. And then you also see the NAEP on there. That's a national performance test. And so that's used like Secretary Leva used it this year in our meetings at AAEA to discuss how our state is doing compared to other states in the country. And so that's a random selection on who takes that NAEP test. We don't really have a choice in who gets to take it and who doesn't. But we are selected to participate in that test this year. Math is on there. That is our, that's our interim assessment that we've been using. We'll, we'll take those in the fall, winter, and spring. And some of those, some of the testing dates aren't on this calendar that you have. Anna's still working on finalizing some of those, but we do take three interims for reading and math. And then you also see on there the ATLAS science. We're gonna try to take the ATLAS, we are going to, not try. We're gonna take the ATLAS science interim assessment as well this year to help familiarize ourselves and our students with the program. And I mean, the, the English and math is not ready yet for the interim assessment. And I'm not sure that we want to jump into that just yet because we're getting good data from our math assessments. But we're definitely gonna jump on it with the science and see how that goes. So ELCA 21 is also on there. That is our English language proficiency assessment. So our, our students that are in ESOL, it measures English proficiency in reading, writing, listening, and speaking. Another one that's on there is ACT Work Keys. And Work Keys is a skills-based assessment, job skills assessment. And so the kids can earn a National Career Readiness Certificate through this test. And if they get a bronze, it's got, it's laid out. If they have a bronze certificate, then some jobs that they may be able to do right out of the gate is auto body repair, vet assistant, a janitorial supervisor, drywall installer, or a pharmacy aide. And so like each level of certification, there's jobs that could potentially work for them based off of this Work Keys assessment. And so there's a silver, a gold, and a platinum level. We had kids take it last year and I think Bruce and Roxanne can kind of speak to what levels we're seeing out of some of our kids. I think that's everything on there. Do you have any questions about it? Also included on the back of that sheet, a little more information about the NAEP and the PSAT if you need it. And also the writing pilot that we're doing. There's a PowerPoint that goes along with that. I think that's it unless you guys have questions about it.
If I may speak on the PSAT, we do have a senior that is a semifinalist for the National Merit Scholar. He doesn't like the fanfare, but he says our castle on. He's qualified to be semifinalist. That's the first one we've had since three years ago when we had been even to the National Merit Scholar. We also have 10 juniors right now that we are going to test that we feel could pull it out and be a National Merit as well because their PSATs are high enough to do that. So really just wanted to make that comment.
Okay, if there aren't any other questions or comments, we'll move on to the superintendent reports. We have first, tab A, we have the school transfer list. Remember last month, we approved that I as superintendent can approve these and then we'll, we'll continue to just make them available to you afterwards. We had eight coming into the district and four that were leaving the district, but they're listed there for you. Tab B is our financial report, projection report. We had, I just want to point out in August, that's not our typical revenue. And if you look at other, it was basically 1.2 million and about a million of that was our teacher fund, teacher raise salary fund came in. So if there was anything else, but that is not normal. It will be next year probably, I would assume. But if you look back at previous years, we didn't have that coming in. So that made it look really good this month. Go into the enrollment report, which is tab C. You'll see that last year, end of year last year, we had 2,232 enrolled. As of 9/6, which when this report was compiled, we have 2,289 and that's excluding our pre-K students. And then our three-quarter ADM, I'm sorry, I made a mistake on that. It's 9/12/22 is that enrollment from the third column. That was 2258. And then our three-quarter ADM was 2258. So we are trending up from the end of last year and from our three-quarter ADM. I kind of just put out kindergarten numbers because that's, that kind of shows you where, where we are and that's pretty average. We had 146 in kindergarten at Watson Primary and St. Paul has nine. And then all the charts that follow are what you'll, you'll see our running data for the next nine months as we go along. Kind of breakdown by building. We are up, if you want to look at it, primary from the end of last year where we finished at 462. We have 486. We're in 86 right now. And then the last chart shows the actual year-by-year comparison by minor. So from 2021 where we had 2,182 to now 2,289. Those last two pages are the data that we pulled and compiled those numbers.
That certain grade class is big.
They are, they are.
Kind of new life today.
Yeah.
That's good. Somebody feeling.
We are not over, but we are, we are at capacity. We're pretty close to capacity.
Like the second, the second grade class achieved this year?
Yes, sir.
They're my red shirts, I call them. A lot of them had waived the year of COVID and so that class was bigger.
Junior class is really large as well, about almost 190.
Wow.
There's, there's about one in each building, except for intermediate right now. That's just got this one little outlier that's boom, and then everybody else is so average.
Well, intermediate, probably that age group right there, probably not hurting our feelings.
Well, hang on, we're on that for as long as I can.
Coming to them next year.
Send them to middle school.
Okay, if there aren't any other questions, we'll go on to the administration report. And we can go to Matt first. I don't know if he has anything else.
Yeah. I've started getting into some PLCs. Started the intermediate today, actually. And had some, had some fun there with Ms. Hawkins and they're doing a great job though. I was really impressed there. I know we are across the district. We've been working on with our admin team, just some walkthroughs and just outline for that. And Mr. Warren and I are gonna get into some classrooms and give the teachers some specific things that we're looking at and just be able to give them a little bit of feedback when we go in and try to keep that positive, of course. But we want to, we want to be in the classroom seeing the teachers teach and hope that the teachers aren't getting nervous about that. But I know as a teacher, it's, it's tough to not get nervous when people are coming into classrooms. But definitely not trying to get anybody. We just want to see what's going on and be more involved, so. We have a wellness meeting this week on Wednesday. I'd like to give a shout out to our nurses. They've done a great job of getting a building-level wellness committee put together. And they've been working on that, having some meetings with some people for their buildings and trying to improve things specifically there at their buildings, so. And then also I want to give a shout out to our counselors. They've put together an advisory committee. We've had this in the past and it's been very beneficial just bringing a lot of community members in. It's kind of like, I talked to you guys about Bright Futures. It's a lot like Bright Futures where they just bring everybody together in one room and we can talk about the needs of our schools and how everybody can help our kids be more successful. So I'm excited about that. I think their first meeting is on the 18th of this month, so I'll be, I'll be there with them to see what they have to say. Also Madison County Health Coalition helped us get some health curriculum. Along with that, there's some training for the teachers and I think Bruce's teachers have been going through that. And so it's pretty extensive, the, the training for the health curriculum. And they'll get books and everything along with that, so. Brendan Patterson did a great job just reaching out to us and helping us get that set up. And then we've been. Sorry, I've been working through the residency forms for McKinney-Vento and I'm planning on having that done by the end of the month. And getting all those kids set up with McKinney-Vento services, any kids that need it. And that's anybody that has inadequate housing or is sharing housing with someone. So anybody listening that feels like they're in that situation, they can give me a call and I'll get them set up with services.
When I drove a bus, that was a real prime place to see stuff like that. The bus drivers should be some big help on that.
Yes, for sure. I think I talked to you guys a little bit last time about the Thrive Academy that I'm in and Jennifer and Sarah are both in. It's been really good training and, and we've went back to the principals and everybody set up a behavior matrix. And we've been talking to the kids about that and going through that. We're gonna get all of our principals trained in that Thrive Academy and then also our counselors. So we're working on getting that set up right now. I think that's the last thing I've got, so I have one more thing, but I'm gonna let Bruce talk about that, so.
Well, mine's gonna be easier, I mean, we are as busy as we always are, so I don't want you to get the impression that we're not doing stuff, but I don't necessarily have anything new to update you with, so I'll make it quick today.
Go ahead.
I was gonna ask you a good question, Bailey, did you get the vans and stuff that we approved last year? We were, we were able to purchase one and we graciously appreciate that, and I mean, if you've seen it around town, you'll notice the tech van. But the guys, I mean, the guys have been beaming with joy, they're proud of that and excited about that, so, yeah, thank you very much for asking.
Well, like Bailey, I don't have a whole lot to report. We've been playing catch-up, we're finally, we're finally to the point where we start moving forward. We've got our safety checks coming up, we've got all of our fire inspection stuff, we've got all that. We're, in the next couple of weeks, we should be completely caught up with that. On the good notes, we finished all of our HVAC installs from the Estergram, so we got that completed a couple of three weeks ago. And on the safety standpoint, thanks to Bailey and the tech team, that, we have started the purchasing process for all of our locks. The bad thing is, we're looking six to eight weeks out on brass because brass is a hot commodity right now, but we're in the process of getting everything labeled, marked, and ordered. So in the next six to eight weeks, hopefully we start changing doors and door locks. So other than that, I don't have a lot to report.
It's the lead free and reduced apps, and then we've been processing them, they have slowed down for a little while. It depends on how fast the packets come in, just keep pushing them.
What percentage do we are right now?
We're less than 50% of most campuses right now, and they have until the first of October.
I mean, I just, I figured, yes, individually, but as a district, I saw it's at 60.33% at the moment, with 607 not filled out.
I know Prairie Grove Friday night, they had a table set up at the football game, might be one way to.
And they announced it over the, they had store codes and announced it on.
I would have put it in our newsletter, but.
If we could push it at some of the volleyball games and the football games, and we can, you know, if we got somebody to mention it or something to catch their eye, it probably wouldn't hurt.
I think Pee-wee starts tomorrow too, it's usually a good crowd.
Yeah, Pee-wee basketball and Pee-wee football starts this Saturday tackle, they've been having flag, but tackle starts this Saturday too, so I don't know if we play at Huntsville or what, but if we could push it there, you know, it might be just to get a few of them motivated.
Realistically, how do we, how many do we need to get that, that goal?
70% or something.
Yeah, I mean, 70%, I mean. Or number wise though, I mean, we talked another 60, we talked another 80, no, we're 200. I mean, we're at 60% right now, 607 still haven't filled it out.
And 10% of 22, what was it, 2289? 2,300, basically.
Okay, that's where we're standing.
We can push and we will, I mean, we, we got. Plans in place of how we will start utilizing different people to start calling and checking on like we did last year.
When are we starting that?
It's 11.
Right, I know. We, last year we waited until like the last two weeks, so.
We've got home junior high football game this Thursday night right here at Seventh and Junior High. So that should be, you know, a prime opportunity to push for them. They got Pee-wee basketball tomorrow night at the gym, girls.
If we're 200 away, that's.
Yeah, if we can get.
We're gonna do some.
Well, we, I mean, we're working with principals, they have a list, they have term forms, like, I mean, we're, we send, I send that up to them bi-weekly. So I mean, we're, the date is there, I mean, we're, we're working it hard, it's just. But you just got something that won't fill it out at all.
The old saying goes, you lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink.
I mean, anything you can do, I mean, we're, like Jill said before, like this year we're giving out gas card, grocery cards, I remember iPad, Bluetooth headphones. We're trying to find everything that may appeal to someone. All I have to do is fill it out three to five minutes, be entered.
Yeah, it takes no time.
We'll push that again too in our advisory, push that out and dangle the care and offer popsicles to the classes and fill it out, whatever we didn't do, try to get that out.
I'm sending help letters tomorrow for those at Harvard.
An extra funding will be, be handy.
It makes it feel better, this is probably a little bit better than we were at this point last year.
We have, was it 67 last year?
68.4, I think.
Wow, so close.
So close. We were like 48 kids away, I think.
Sherry Cozad had a ESL parent night to help some of those families get their applications filled out. And she was following up this morning, just helping kind of get some missing information to get those processed through, so.
What about tomorrow night at the career program, can we do something?
Yes, we'll have time to do that.
I don't think they need to open arms. Have you think many have to open arms?
That is a good idea. Yeah. Yeah. I think maybe over at Presbyterian Church State.
Might be at Alex Foster, he probably held his thing over, he's charged.
Yeah, you wet us up there at Bakersfield.
They have food pantry on Wednesday mornings.
But we're not giving up, especially hard, I mean, it's still within reach. I think what I said, almost 200 previously qualified already, so I mean, we know that the needs right there, so.
All right, I will try to be quick to keep up with everybody else, but I've got my list here. Start off with the football right now, junior high and seventh grade got their first wins on Thursday night over at Gentry, so we're proud of them. The senior high hasn't got a win yet, but I'm, I'm proud of the guys, they've been banged up, they've been working hard and, you know, just sometimes, you know, I, nobody wants to win more than I do. Nobody wants to win more than those coaches, but sometimes when you're building culture and you're starting a foundation, sometimes it's a little bit more about wins and losses than pointing in the right direction. And there's no doubt in my mind that those guys are pointing in the right direction. And so I'm happy with them and have no doubt that the wins are gonna be coming. Our homecoming game will be October 6th against Gravit, so I wanted to let you know about that. Our next home game will be September 22nd, and on that night, we're gonna recognize our first responders here in town and in the community. Won't have a Howitzer this time, I'm sorry to announce. But, but we do have a pretty cool surprise if everything works out, and I'm just gonna keep that there for that night. So do have something special planned, hopefully everything will work out and everything will fall in place. So I hope to see you at the games, it means a lot to the kids to see you there. Volleyball, I'm really proud of those girls and that coaching staff, they have fought through some adversity here lately on just about every team. And I can say that those coaches have handled those situations about as good as they could be handled, and I'm really proud of them. And the, the girls have stuck together and played hard. Want to let you know that on October 3rd is the Dig Pink Cancer Awareness Game for volleyball, and we will be playing that in the Activity Center. So it will be over there that night, and then the week of October 16th, we will be hosting the district volleyball tournament for the senior high, and that'll also be in the Activity Center. So I hope to see you all around, that'll be, if I'm not mistaken, the first tournament we hosted in the new Activity Centers. So I hope to see you there, and we want to show it off, and we plan on showing it off a lot. Golf, just running through, a golf district tournament is on the 19th, a week from tomorrow at the Highlands Golf Course in Belavista. They have a match tomorrow at Highlands and then one on Wednesday, I believe in Bentonville, preparing for their district tournament. They finished last week, the boys won every home match we had this year, and so they did really well. And the girls won a couple and competed very well in all of them, so they've done very well. If we have anybody qualify, the girl state will be on September 26th and the boy state is on October 2nd. Our cheer group, and we're waiting on the delivery of the mats that we ordered for their competition cheer team, and they've done a good job running all over campuses and doing pep rallies and being there for the games. They've done a really good job and it's a, it's a good group of young ladies that are working there and I'm proud of them. Cross country, we've competed in three meets so far, cross country, I'm sorry, two meets. This past week for Huntsville, the senior boys were the 4A, 5A runner-up in Elkins as a team, which is really good. For the girls, Avery Dunn finished second overall in that meet, so she did a great job, and we had nine total athletes medal at that cross-country meet for senior high and junior high. So they had a really good day. Coach Coltrane, Coach Brown has done a really good job. Also St. Paul competed in their first cross-country meet a little over a week ago in magazines. And so we are athletics, full speed ahead on both campuses now, and so we're at both high schools. We're also working on getting new uniforms purchased and in for St. Paul for their cross-country and track too, so we're, we're happy about that and happy to get them in some new uniforms. Last thing I have is I want to let you know, we have partnered with Perry Weather. If you don't know what Perry Weather is, they are a company that has a weather station. And what we will do is we are getting a weather station that we will put on top of our concession stand probably at the football field. We'll also have a warning system that we'll put out at Mitchison Park for everything that's going on there as well. Now what that does is this weather station will have, will have a camera on it, it will have radar capabilities, it has its own cellular capability, so it will just connect it to a near tower. It won't cost the school any wifi or anything like that. It also has a camera, so we can have a view of the field of what's going on at that time. It has a wind gauge, it has a wet bulb thermometer on it, so anything that we will need, need safety weather-wise will be in this weather station. And so what it also comes with is a speaker that if, I mean, this here on the screen, you can see is a widget. I don't know what a widget is, but that's a widget. And everybody will have access to this widget, I almost feel bad saying that. But everybody, I know, I know. Everybody can have access to this. Now what that shows is that, that marker is at the football field in Huntsville. If you scroll it in, it would be on the 50-yard line. And what it does, that red circle is a 10-mile radius around the football field. If lightning strikes inside that 10-mile radius, we will, all the coaches will get a warning on their phone saying, get off the field, you gotta go. At the field where that stadium where the siren is and the announcement, it will make a siren noise letting everybody in the field, the officials, the teams know you got to leave. And then after 30 minutes, with 30 minutes with no lightning inside that 10-mile radius, it will sound another siren saying it's okay to come back. So it'll give you an all-clear. What that thing does for you guys is where it says clear with the tech mark, if there's lightning inside of that circle, it will give you the 30-minute countdown. So if you have to leave the stands and go to your car, you can watch and know exactly how much time we have until the teams can come back out and play again. So you're not sitting in the stands wondering if everything's safe or how much longer you can see that. Right on the bottom, I have the hourly precipitation there, the current conditions. Now Bailey took a screenshot of that at about 4:15 or so, so those aren't current. Right now it just uses National Weather Service data, but as soon as our system is installed, it will get all of that information directly from the weather right at the football field. And so that station will also trigger alarms at Mitchison for softball, for baseball, for cross-country, whatever's over there as well. And so it will let them know if there's something too close to take over as well. So this is something that I talked to Mr. Warren about and he was on board with, and I'm excited to do this. It's just another thing we're getting to do that's gonna keep our kids safe, I mean, keep you guys safe as well. That wet bulb thermometer it has on, it's huge because that's what we have to go through. Last month we talked about the temperature and the heat, well, that has exactly what we need on it, and our coaches can look at their phone and get a direct reading from right there at the place. And so that's about as good as you can get on it. So excited about that, wanted to let you know about that, and just excited how things are going in athletics, and I think we're making quality strides and excited to see how things continue to improve.
They got a volleyball game.
You need to talk to Bailey about that.
Bailey, I'll slip you some more money, man.
The coach has got a scroll over here and I got a short, a short pad, $5, that's great. I do want to say, he was talking about cross-country, we had, we had a senior boy and a senior girl that medaled in the meet at magazine as well, and it was a short course. It was 98 degrees when we, when we started running, we went ahead and ran. The wet bulb was, was allowable, so we went ahead and ran, and it was only a mile and a half for all divisions, so they cut it down to that, which, which really helped that day. Because I can't tell you how many kids we saw coming through the finish line that were just relieving everything that they had taken down before they ran, there was a bunch of it. And, but no kids went down, so that was always good. I'll start with us, you know, we had a Pioneer Weekend, a big shout out to anyone who had anything to do with that. I asked some of the older people that's been there for several years what it looked like, and they, they thought we had anywhere from 1,200 to 2,000 people Friday night and Saturday at Pioneer. So everyone acted right, it was, it was a great night, the weather was nice, believe it or not. The music was fantastic and, and so really proud, and I want to give a shout out to the, to the Huntsville High School band who came down for the parade. You know, a parade's not a parade without a band, that's just the way I look at it, and so I'm so glad that they were there to kick off our parade, they did a fantastic job. Those kids, they did really well, and I took pictures and sent them to Miss Enix and bragged on the kids for, they were, they were just awesome, it was good, that's kind of a way to kick it off. We did get a startup grant this year for a new class, and I'm happy to say that tomorrow we're gonna order the, the materials for it, finally got the POs in. Mr. Ryan Ritchie is, is teaching it at our first class this year. Year one, we have one class, year two be two, and year three be three, we got media communications being taught right now. And so we're very happy to get that new in, the audio video class, AV class, and he's got some kids in there getting after it already. We had our map test for 3-6 a couple of weeks ago, we're K-2 map testing tomorrow and Wednesday, and we'll high school map test next week. Today we had grandparents day because we were out of school Friday for PD, and so it's the first time, I think, that we've had grandparents day at St. Paul in quite a while. And we had a huge kickoff of grandparents there, our cafeteria, especially at Lower Elementary, lunch was, was packed, and it was good to see all the people there. And we even had one or two that came in from the high school, which that shocked me, I didn't think we'd have any there for those. But it was great to see all them come out. I do want to say that Bailey has sent out a list to, to me and I'm assuming to all the other principals of who were missing on that free and reduced lunch form. So this week, about three or four of us, including myself, were gonna start calling like we did last year. I think I personally filled out about five to 10 on the phone last year, and if the parents want me to do it again this year, I'll do it again this year. But I've got me and Ms. Glenn and Ms. Cindy and Ms. Huff, we're all gonna, we're gonna start making those phone calls probably Wednesday, we're gonna start Wednesday. That's all I got.
Appreciate you doing that.
You bet.
So I have a couple of things, I just wanted to talk about the junior bank board because we got that started up last month. And we have 12 kids who have joined the junior bank board, they had to fill out an application that would be chosen. And we will meet monthly, it's Ms. Pennington, she is the sponsor, and then myself, and they're, we're gonna meet monthly, they're gonna teach these kids leadership skills. They'll teach them like, they'll have various people through the banking industry coming and talk to the kids about the different things that they can do there, as well as teaching them leadership skills. They have a dress code, they have community service hours that they have to get, so they'll be volunteering with the people at the bank, with our best workers, and they'll go out and work. Like when they make hamburgers and that kind of stuff, so anytime they're doing community service, the kids will be able to do that community service with them. They'll also help them do resumes, and in the spring they'll be doing mock interviews with the kids to teach them, you know, to teach them those skills that they. And they'll also help them do resumes and in the spring they'll be doing mock interviews with the kids to teach them, you know, to teach them those skills that they need whenever they go into those job interviews. And it'll culminate with a field trip to the Federal Reserve, either in St. Louis or in Dallas. So that'll be fun. And this week, the kids are doing a fundraiser, they're selling Krispy Kreme doughnuts. So if anybody wants some Krispy Kreme doughnuts, contact the high school, myself and Ms. Pennington, or if you know one of these 12 kids and we can hook you up with some.
So we're gonna be here.
So that's a little bit about that and they're really excited and, and we're glad that we're able to offer this for, for our kids. And then the other thing is we're having bowling tryouts Wednesday. So trying to get our bowling team going. Yeah, it season starts in November, so we're gonna, we can only have six on each team, so six boys, six girls. So we're pretty excited about that.
Okay, so we've had math testing as well, it's finishing up this week. We do have our college and post-secondary education fair tomorrow. It's our annual one we do every year, we'll have a, a career fair in the spring. But it's tomorrow from 5:00 to 6:30 in the high school cafeteria. And we've opened this up to any student in Madison County, regardless if they go to Kingston or St. Paul. So if you know any kids in those other schools, they're more than welcome to show up to our career fair. Also, I do want to talk about the work keys that Matt mentioned. We did have several students get either a platinum, gold, silver, bronze certificates last year, but it was not near enough. And I was at a PD this summer when we were down at Little Rock for the principal AAEA. And there was a school in the east Arkansas, that was the first work-ready community in the state. And I don't know that any of them are in northwest Arkansas. So I'm gonna do my best to make sure Huntsville is the first one to get that work-ready community. And that just means that the kids are ready to go to work that are graduating. So we're gonna work really hard on that. It's that, the work keys has kind of been lacked at in the past, but we're gonna pump it up to make sure that kids are taking it and taking it seriously, so.
And that work-ready, sorry, that work-ready is big for businesses when they're looking for somewhere to plant a new building or whatever they're gonna look and see.
That's something I was actually gonna hit on.
Yeah. And that's, that, that's well needed here, for sure. Also, we were at AAA meeting today, Bruce and, and Chris and Coach Preston. And they had to make me check my face because some other team's boy basketball got the trophy over me, or our team. So I'm, the boys' basketball has really, really high GPAs. And I was really sad that they didn't win and I won't say who did it, but you know, it's one of our rivals that did make me very happy. But anyway, Coach River, he's pushing them pretty hard this year to get good grades and to be gentlemen and, and that sort of thing. So next year, we hope to get it and be out as funny because Coach Preston almost fell off his chair because my face was not very nice. But if I told you who it was, you'd agree with me, so that's all I'm saying.
They play by a different set of rules.
They do play by a different set of rules.
It's not fair.
They're, they're a private school, I don't think that's fair. And they're blue.
Middle school, we're, we're still got great momentum going. The teachers and students are both doing a great job with our school-wide behavior matrix. And our acronyms are pride. And so our, our big push for the year is, are you showing pride in the classroom? Are you showing pride in cafeteria and all aspects of the school day? And teachers are doing a really great job of reinforcing and teaching those expectations. We started math testing, we finished English and math, math's testing, so that's going really well. We had our first leadership team meeting last week and I feel like that was, it's really important to have that. And they actually formed that through the PLCs. And so they, they picked or they wanted to elect or they wanted to represent them. And so the autonomy of that and just having that person represent their PLC. And that way when we make important decisions, it's not a Mr. Johnson, Mrs. Down, it's a collaborative, it's a group effort. It's a, it's our, it's our school. And so I feel like that leadership team is very important and we've gotten off to a great start on that. With that, we're starting our RTI process, interventions, enrichment opportunities. If you've ever seen Mr. Taylor's Ride for Focus, it's phenomenal. He, he gets kids and provides them that opportunity to, not only are they riding bikes, but he's, he's teaching them like valuable life skills. So that's very great. And we're, we're kind of looking to rebrand what our RTI is and we're calling it SORT. We're doing a lot of things, not only interventions, but looking for enrichment opportunities for those students to be, to be pushed. And so that's going really well. We are partnering with RTI scheduler, I think the high school uses that. And that's gonna help just the, being able to diagnostics as far as scheduling. And that's gonna be really great for us and we're excited about what that's gonna look like. And so other than that, it's just me and Ms. Down, we're trying to be in classroom as much as possible to provide support. We want the kids, we want the teachers to expect us to be in there, be comfortable when we're in there and provide support in any way. And that's the only way I feel like we're gonna improve is, is to be there, to be present. So that's what we're working on at middle school.
Um, I mean ditto to everything Mr. Johnson said, but really enjoyed having the opportunity to build the advisory program, I think of a little school. And these first few weeks because our, you know, our TI doesn't ever kick off right at the very beginning of the year. And so our 30 minute advisory time daily has been real structured lessons, going back to the behavior matrix, doing a lot of character development and seeing all types of lessons. Things that are, you know, encouraging kids to sort of take ownership, goal setting, checking grades and ownership for those types of things. And just a really good focus on the small cohorts in our advisories. And trying to build some, some dynamics and relationships within the small groups of peoples, also students as well. So that's been a joy to be a part of kind of developing. Mr. Ferguson talked about the thrive, we went through our second session of thrive, it was as wonderful as the first. And, and excited about taking that matrix and, and going even deeper further, um, next steps with that process. And looking forward to our, our last, our last piece of that will be actually a month from now. So, and excited that, you know, my teammates will be also a part of those next cohorts. So that we can start to really work together and create things that, that are cohesive around that thing. So that's, that's all I got.
That was the signature.
Hello, hey, I have one for the youth school, do you want to take it?
Yeah, she's in here.
For who, for me? Thank you, Tina.
All right, Tina, you already standing, so it's not Groundhog Day.
So we're just working budget numbers, trying not to transpose any numbers. You guys are gonna vote on it in a minute. If you don't vote on it, then we're back to, back to the start, so. So everything I've done is all for nothing.
Well, you should have said that, they know we love to see you work.
But anyway, now all jokes aside, you guys are gonna look at that in a little bit. But I feel way better about it this year than I did last year at this time. So, so we ended last year strong and, and that just helps out to begin this year, so.
Working on budgets, doing a little bit of testing here and there, working on transitions, students coming in, things like that. Nothing, nothing big.
Lots of students coming in. And I want to talk a little bit about the transition, or the college and career fair that they're having at high school. We also are having a table for Arkansas rehab and transition for people with IEPs, students with IEPs. And Bible force to, to help them see what programs are available for after school and what colleges and how they can get scholarships and get any assistance that they need. So I'm pretty excited that they're coming for that. And Mr. Webb, Benner was helpful to get, set that up and help me with that. And then I know we've had a unified program for several years in the district. And then the person who was working with it has left, Ms. Torres left, she was very helpful with that. And so it's been a kind of transitional year for that program from last year. If you remember, there's a lot of different people on the board, but we got recognized by ESPN. And we're having a unified program in the high school. Well, that's kind of ramped back up, they're working hard on that again. We've had a couple of meetings and they're, worked with the counselors, worked with Coach McCone and different people get it going again. And so they're heading to Lincoln Wednesday, I think Wednesday, for their, for a flag football competition. So that's reared up again and they're all excited about that, so.
And we do have a state championship basketball, which I would be sitting over there in the gym from the United, Unified Sports a couple of years ago.
And we, another program that's getting back on track is our transition classroom. And so briefly, they're able to work in the community or able to work within the school and get paid from a grant. And we're getting that going and have a school enterprise amongst the program. So I hope to have them come and share with you later when, when they get more comfortable with that. That's exciting.
Um, at primary, everybody from pre-K all the way to second grade is busy doing testing. So pre-K is doing their dial assessments that they're required to do. And kindergarten first and second do a few different beginning of the year testing. They have a required universal scrainers that they have to do, that requires a lot of one-to-one testing with the teacher and the student. And then of course their math assessments. So first and second grade have finished their math assessments and kindergarten will do theirs tomorrow and Thursday. So just lots of that beginning of the year stuff still going on. Getting us some good baseline data to work through throughout the year. They've both mentioned Thrive Academy. We had a pretty good head start with our behavior matrix in place for a few years. And so this week we'll begin just kind of taking that to the next level with our teachers, working on some tier one behavior supports for classrooms, just to help. Take those, you know, what do we do when we're not meeting those expectations and kind of hit that next level. And PLCs started up, everybody was able to meet last week, those are on Thursday and Friday mornings. If you're nothing to do at 7:30, we'd love for you to come. And then second grade meets during their lunch or recess time. So Thursdays and Fridays, if you're ever in the, in the area and you want to swing on by. But they've been kind of focusing on getting this testing going, but we're anxious to start looking at data pretty soon.
So intermediate, everyone is working hard and I truly do appreciate all of our team members and what all they do because it is a lot. We had grandparents day celebration, our third grade does that every year, has grandparents come in and visit, so that was successful. Not yesterday, good lord, y'all, it's been a day already. Today we had that and we had a lot of grandparents, but I didn't really get to visit with them very much. But math testing tomorrow and Thursday. And we are like, primary, we've been doing lots of just beginning of the year assessments, DIBELS, STAR test, so forth and so on. And we have started our PLCs last week and one group did it the week before. We are really looking at essential standards, grouping our kids based on CFAs, really using that data to guide instruction. And ours are on Mondays, we do all three grade levels on Monday. And we're starting data chat notebooks, so the students will set their goals based on what their scores were and teachers guide that. So that kind of get, puts some ownership on the students to see where they're at and look at their growth. The 21st, fourth grade is going to go to Farmland Adventures for a field trip. And we have the Health Coalition, we've been working with them, Matt helped me remember. And the 28th and 29th, they're gonna come in and talk to the students about vaping and some things like that. And I stole Chris's idea on the committees because I thought that was a good idea to let them select who they want on the committees to represent. So anyway, I think that's all I have.
Well, I've got just a few things, just to update everybody. The integrity program, right now we are still waiting on the Arkansas, I always forget if it's Arkansas Energy Office or Arkansas Office of Energy to review our application. And once they get final approval, then integrity will start working in the buildings to replace lights and to replace, you know, windows will be a long-term plan. But, but they will start that process as soon as they get the okay. And on that same kind of note, the Boston Mountain Health Clinic, I contacted them just to get an update. They won't find out until next month if they are actually receiving the grant. But everything is set up at the primary to be ready to go as soon as they get word. So we're, we are functioning as if that was taking place. The survey of the athletic area surrounding the activity center is basically complete. They were, they were, the surveyors were working tonight actually at the city council meeting to make sure that all of the information was correct. And then as soon as, they've been sending bits and pieces of it to Hi-Jackson as they've completed it. So we should have some word about what that, where they are in that stage as far as the potential buck bond batting facility soon. This is our timeframe for doing our, every two years we go through the master facilities plan. We will have a public meeting at some point during this month and we'll announce it to get feedback from just the general public about what they see as our facility needs. I can say that we were put on the priority needs list for facilities based on our student population growth. So if you look at that, the facilities department will go through and rank districts based on how fast you're growing. And you know, we were number nine on that across, from across the state. I think Elkins was the only other district in our region that was higher, I think they were three or four. So I say all that to say, look for that date to garner feedback from people about what they feel our needs are. But that's all part of that process for the master facilities plan in general. And then finally, I know Harry's out sick today. We are looking at combining routes because we have some driver shortage. We started off okay, but you know, people have left or moved away or have gotten sick, you know, like him. And he's been seven since school started as well. We do have a new computer mapping program that we hope to help utilize, to help us find deficiencies for our routes. And you know, we're not going to do something that's unreasonable, but if we can combine routes or do something, we will do it as soon as we can.
I've got a question on that. I know we've got a lot of routes that run the same tracks of two or three other buses. So that shouldn't be a problem unless there is a rule about how long the kid sits on a school bus.
Well, there, there's guidelines that we have within the district that, you know, we try to get them off. I think, you know, we don't try to get them on before 6:30 and we try to get them off by 5:00 if I remember right. I think that's the timeframe, so that's why you see some of those, those things happen like that.
Okay, because I did, I mean, there were several that, that ran over several miles of each other's tracks.
Right, yeah. And then, you know, there's capacity of the buses obviously, but, but that is the goal, is to not keep them on the bus.
I didn't know there was a regulation on that with the state or maybe it's something we tried to do or.
And as far as I know, it's not a state regulation, it's just a good general practice within districts not to put kids on. districts not to put kids on before 6:30. You see, most districts, not necessarily have policies, but they have a guideline of what they wanna do transportation-wise and that one. That's kind of what.
I never asked that when I drove and I just, I'm saying, thinking about that when you said that, about combined routes. I mean, if it wasn't for something like that, it wouldn't be hard to eliminate some because like I said, we can drive over each other's tracks.
That was one of the goals for purchase in the software is to increase efficiency.
Right.
But I will point and say, we do have two or three special education buses that, you know, will.
Well, right, and they have to, but I mean, I drove, I drove the same mileage as, oh, what's her name, been driving for years, lives up there, Clifty. Smith, Smith girl, Shannon. I run half of her route on my route, just so she, I could get to my route, you know, and stuff like that. So, I just was wondering, you know, about that. And I only had like 27 kids on my route, I don't know what she had at that time, but the first girl got on at 6:20 in the morning to get here by 7:30, 5:00, 7:40 in the morning.
Well, we've already combined quite a few just from COVID numbers, so I.
No, I haven't, I haven't drove since COVID, so I mean, you know, I'm just talking back several years ago, so I didn't know if there was a rule or what. Because when I drove back in the seventies, I left the house at 6:05 in the morning. My first stop was 6:07, we pulled in here 10 minutes late because school started at 8:05.
Yes.
And I figured things had changed.
Bruce, how's our buses? We good?
Yeah, right now, we're good. Just a couple out here and there, but so far, we've been able to cover with Melissa, our sub-driver, and Brian driving as well, so. I think we used a Divinaboy one day in the small bus, but other than that, we've been pretty good.
We're not having to combine though?
No, we haven't, not yet, no.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that. We're looking at more at Huntsville route than we are at this.
We're setting pretty good at our place.
Bruce usually lets us smoke if they're the first.
Oh, yeah.
We're pretty good.
Okay. So, next is our new business, section six. We only have one item for approvals this evening, and that is approval of the proposed fiscal budget. This is an annual compliance requirement. We would recommend adopting the 2324 fiscal budget as presented, with the recommendation that we be authorized to make adjustments as needed for the, for DESI, for the final submission. You know, I've kind of been through visually with you through this. We ended last year fiscally really well. You know, this year, we're taking more of a, we're not trying to bump up our ending balance as much as we had to last year. So, we will, you know, we budgeted a lot more just in general to account for all of that. First pages or the second pages are revenue and expenditures. And we have federal funding on the next page and special education on the next page and pre-k, so.
Before we vote on this, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How is the contract crew you hired doing out at the high school?
As far as I know, they're doing well.
Yes.
No issues, doing good, everything, okay.
Blake can speak more to that, for sure.
We kind of threw them into hot seat.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, they, we signed the contract, I think, on Tuesday and they were at work on Wednesday. So, they scrambled around, they've had some turnover, but they've been really good to work with and we've not had any complaints or anything come from the, from the high school.
Okay, I just, I just kept thinking about that when, before we voted, there's a lot of that.
Yeah. And they're included in our operational.
Right.
Do you have any more questions? Can I get a motion to approve? Motion by Nick, second by Nick. All favors?
Thank you very much. Personnel is our next one. It's item seven, but it's tab eight, sorry. I wouldn't entertain any questions, recommendation to approve that.
Can I get a recommend, a motion to approve personnel? Just move on Steve. Second by Nick, call number.
Personnel resignations, classified, Michelle Mullins, St. Paul Nutrition, September 12th, Alicia Davis, Watson Primary Nutrition, September 12th, Holly Bennett, Transportation, September 20th. Hires, classified, Emily Penny, HIS Special Education Paraprofessional, August 28th. Jessica Lau, Lau, sorry if I mispronounced that, Watson Primary Nutrition, September 12th. Karen Barton, HHS Nutrition, September 12th. Amanda Harmon, Watson Primary Nutrition, September 12th. April Ruber, Huntsville High School Nutrition, September 12th. Ashley Jones, Huntsville Middle School Custodian, 240-day, September 12th. Ricky Head, Huntsville Middle School Custodian, 240-day, September 12th. Miranda Rowan, Rowan, Watson Primary Custodian, 240-day, September 12th. Transfers, Elizabeth Hill, HIS Special Education Parapro, to HHS Special Education Parapro, August 28th. And Russell Woodward, Athletic Department Custodian, to Athletic Department Maintenance, 240-day, September 12th. And that is all I have.
Does anybody have anything else? I'll take a motion for adjournment. Motion by Nick, second by John, I shall favor.